Good evening. I will call to order the licensing board for the city of West Bend for September 28th, 2020 at 6:25. Notice that we have five items on the agenda, the first being approval of the licensing board minutes for September 14th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, original Class A combination license for Ma Malika Petroleum, Inc., Main Street Mobile 500 S, Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item number three, original Class B combination license for Joseph Stefanko Moonlighting at 326 Commerce Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, original Class B combination license for Antidote 1222 LLC, The Antidote 302 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussion or corrections? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I'll have Alderman Hugestir handle number five, as I will be abstaining.
Item number five, appointment of agent Robert Goodell, Quick Trip Incorporated, Quick Trip 136 and 1750 South Main, Silverbrook.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close by the same sign, motion carries. With that, I'll close the licensing board.
All right, I am going to call to order the Finance Committee. First on the agenda is the approval of the Finance Committee minutes from the September 14th meeting.
Motion approved.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And now we have six items for consideration. The first item up is actually a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 3.9, 300, 3,940,000 in taxable general obligations, refunding bonds, Series 2020C. Phil Kossen is gonna speak to us on that. Can you see us? Can you, can you see us, Phil? Hear us? Oh, got some tech.
John's working.
John's gonna see. Hi, Phil, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Awesome. You are here to give us the resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of the taxable general obligations?
Correct. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Do you want me to do the sale information right now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All good evening. I'm not able to see by video others, but trying to take you through the results of the sale that occurred today. The, if you recall, last month, we came in front of the city council asking for authorization to proceed with the refinancing of a couple of issues that are outstanding. And just to remind you, we're not taking out any new debt, but we're refinancing existing obligations of the city. Since that time, a number of things have occurred. One, we had to work with staff to put together what we called an official statement of prospectus on the city, and we rely on staff a great deal to help us pull that all together. In addition to that, we had a rating call with S&amp;P. If you remember, a few years back, the city moved from, to S&amp;P Standard Imports for their ratings, and that rating report is in the information that we have provided in your packet, and our information is on page 23 of your packet. The refinancings that occurred really affected a number of different funds, and I talked about that last time I was in front of you. And so this isn't gonna impact the general fund, meaning it's not gonna have a direct impact on the levy. Rather, it's gonna impact TIDS 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, 12, 13, and a little bit of the sewer fund, meaning by refinancing the debt, it's gonna help the cash flow of each of those funds that I just referenced, the different TIDS and the sewer fund. And some of those districts are districts that have had, you know, water turb, cash flow issues that this will help with as well. So today at 10 o'clock, we took bids. The whole process for us is to send it out to potential bidders nationally, locally, and statewide to try to secure the best deal possible for the city. And we ended up with six bids, with a winning bid, I'm on page, the second page of our presentation, six bids with a winning bid coming in from UMB Bank out of Kansas City at a rate of .8077%. So we're refinancing this debt at rates that are less than 1%. We do have a full tabulation of the different bids, and we did receive six bids. UMB Bank was a little bid, but all the rest of the bids are really pretty close together. Bankers Bank bid, Baird, Michael Sandler out of Chicago, BLK Financial out of Milwaukee, and Franklin Securities out of Minneapolis. And there's a pretty thin grouping of bids. But again, why we brought this to you was, we wanted to make sure that you were able to take advantage of the really low interest rate environment that we're seeing, and that certainly held true today. So the bid tabulation is attached with those six different bidders outlined. The winning bid, again, UMB Bank out of Kansas City, was the winning bid. One of the, one item that we see in most debt issues as they are bid, is they provide you a premium, which is money that is above and beyond what you are looking for from a refunding standpoint. And what we're able to do with that premium is to take that and to reduce the amount of the issue. So in this case, we took the premium, and we reduced the amount of the debt issue from 3,940,000, that would be what was on your agenda, down to 3,775,000. So we're able to reduce the issue by 165,000 less than what we had projected. Interest rates, at the same time, came in a little bit better as well than what we expected. And so in the packet, on page six of our document, it's the actual savings. You're doing this purely for savings. You wanna make sure that you realize a significant amount of savings to undertake this technical work. What we had projected was a savings of about 297,000 over the life of the issue. So it was projected to have a present value savings of right around 7%. So the good news here is because we're able to reduce the debt, rates came in favorable, the actual savings that we realized was 404,000 as opposed to the 297,000. So 106,070 dollars positive difference. So the actual savings, the present value of it is now over 10%, which is a really strong savings. And so we're seeing in some years as much as 50,000 to 60,000 in savings. Again, it'll be spread amongst many of the TIPS districts. But the biggest winners in this from a TIPS standpoint are TIDS 9, 11, and 12, even though there's a small savings in those others. But great savings realized over 400,000. So the result turned out great with a lot of bids, great interest, great rates, and we're able to achieve a savings that was 100, over 100,000 better than what we had projected. In the rating report, which is also attached, they did assign the AA rating, which is what they assigned from the standpoint, from the time that he switched from Moody's to S&amp;P. They assigned a AA rating. They have affirmed that AA rating at AA with a stable outlook, meaning isn't any pressure one way or the other at this point. They feel you are a very strong AA. And what they identify in here are a couple of items that you'll see highlighted in here. A stable outlook, they look at the credit history, and they really say you have a strong economy in West Bend. You know, the state of Wisconsin's been benefiting from the fact that we, that we don't have a lot of sales tax revenue backed bonds, that we don't have those type of, or in your case, it's not a heavy tourism area that saw a drop in like, in room tax revenue. But rather, the economy stays, is staying very strong, and is very diverse. They've identified strong management, which is, which is great, and the fact that you have strong budgetary flexibility, and also have strong liquidity, liquidity really being your flat balance that you have in place. So a lot of strengths that they have identified, but again, they've gone through the rating with the city recently. No, no change is the real story here. I don't see a lot of pressure. So great results, turned out really well. We have a bond chart, which is the last page of the packet that we provided. That bond chart just shows you what's happened over the last year, the trend. And we really see the rates kind of stabilize over the last couple of months. And, you know, that's, that's good news when we create the market to refinance. So really turned out great. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Phil. Does anyone have questions? No? All right. If that, no one has questions, then we'll move on to the, does anyone approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of sale?
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we are gonna hear from Mike Gensch about a resolution authorizing the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses. Hi, Mike.
Thank you. All right. Our department is seeking approval to transfer $391 from the YARC account. This is for therapeutic recreation to an expense account for supplies used for the Special Olympics program. As of June 30th of this year, there was $6,722 in that account. This account is designated for expenses for staff, equipment, and supplies for therapeutic recreation, specifically Special Olympics. Thank you.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. And then moving on, number four, also, Mike is gonna speak on this, the resolution to accept the donation for the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department, and I am gonna abstain from this, as I did in Parks and Rec.
Sounds good. We have one donation this evening for the Red Rocket Playground Climber. The Red Rocket was at Barton Elementary School prior to that development occurring up there. The rocket was removed from that property and stored by volunteers. Park staff refurbished the rocket and installed it across the river from Barton School in Barton Park. We would like to thank the Commonwealth Company, specifically Louis Lang, for their donation. Additionally, we would like to thank the Historic Barton Business Association for removing the rocket. We'd also like to thank Verana Auto for storing the rocket. And we would also like to say thank you to all the other volunteers that were involved with this project. We have received many positive comments about saving this iconic piece of Barton history. So a big shout out and thank you to everyone that was involved. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number five, it's gonna be approving the 2021 City Shared Ride Taxi operation. I believe Doug Newman is gonna speak to us on this.
Good evening. In your package, you should have received a summary of the taxi ridership history dating back to 2015. I'll just touch on a few highlights of this document. On table one, it shows the ridership trends over the last five years. You'll notice in near the end of March, ridership decreased. Obviously, that's when COVID pandemic started and affected ridership. April, you can see is our lowest ridership, with an increase in May and June, leveling out again in July and August. And we expect that to stay about level the remainder of the year. Table two shows the ridership month to date, basically the same time as last year at this time. Ridership is down about 22,000 rides, again, COVID-related. Moving on to table four indicates specific riders that use the type of our service. In 2019, you'll see that 68% of those fall into elderly and disabled category. Overall, ridership was slightly trending downward, but since March, COVID has drastically affected the 2020 statistics. Fortunately, the city has received CARES Act funding in the amount of 1,059,662 to help offset that cost. We expect the CARES Act funding to aid in the shortfall of revenue related to COVID for the remainder of this year, and hopefully through next year too, to keep the taxi service off the levy. Along with this update, we are seeking approval to apply for the 2021 Taxi Operating Grant and grant funding for two replacement vehicles in 2021. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Yes, Alderman Allen?
Yes, I was looking at the fare structure. What's the difference between in the fare categories where it says agency fare?
Agency fare is a, is a charge that goes to companies such as a threshold that, that receive supplemental funding, so they pay an agency fare. So additional, I think we implemented this maybe four years ago or so, as an additional revenue source.
Does it take into account the fact that they get billed?
Yeah, they, they receive supplemental funds to help offset that cost.
All right, thank you.
Doug, I just had a quick question too. I know you said ridership is obviously kind of going down a little bit with COVID, and you're thinking in 2021, you're gonna apply for grants for two new vehicles. If the ridership keeps trending down, would you still pursue those grants? Are the, are the vehicles in bad shape, or what would be the idea?
So the grant, grant funding covers, on a normal situation, grant funding covers 80%. So the city is responsible for 20% of that vehicle replacement cost. Now, with the CARES Act funding that we have, we expect the city doesn't, does not have to pay any of that 20%. The CARES Act will cover and is there for us to use for that 20%. And the vehicles that we replace right now, they're, they range from 150,000 to 175,000 miles on them. So we try to keep them in a rotation. Our staff has done a great job over the last five years getting our equipment back into a good rotation.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Doug?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah.
All I was gonna say was I was gonna abstain.
Oh, okay. Sorry. And one abstain, one abstention. Okay. Moving on then, thank you, Doug. We will move on to the Resolution for Economic Development Administration, the CARES Act Recovery Assistance Grant. Mike is gonna speak with us about that.
Sounds good. Thank you. With the support of many businesses, our department, the Department of Development, and City Administering is applying for an economic development grant to support the development of the Riverwalk West Side Downtown. This is a 50-50 grant. We will be applying for up to $1 million in grant support. The stewardship grant, the DNR stewardship grant funding for the project will address the city's 50% commitment to this grant if we, if we did receive any money. Tonight's resolution will provide us the authorization to apply for the EDA grant. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Okay. And lastly, we have a resolution approving the sale of city property. I believe Mark is gonna speak with us about that.
Yes, good evening. The city and county own, or co-own lands east of University Drive, opposite the university site. 60% of the value is for the county, 40% is for the city. Jim Emmer, a local developer and realtor, wishes to purchase the southwest corner of that city property. It's approximately a quarter of an acre piece of land that is needed to provide access to the lands to the south and east that he wishes to develop. The terms of, of the item in the offer to purchase before you is for a $10,000 purchase price, and it would also make, or address the payment of $20,402 in existing assessments owed to, on this property when it's, when it's developed. The sale will need both city and county approval before the closing. Plan Commission and the city council have already endorsed the comprehensive plan and zoning amendment changes that were necessary to move the development forward for the lands to the east of this. This is the final piece before he would be able to move forward with that, with that development, because this gives him access out to University Drive. Otherwise, the development parcel is landlocked. The parcel itself is outlined in, in the maps that are attached to the offer to purchase. It's a very small piece. It's, has very little, it has no environmental impact for the sale of, of the property as well. And the development of the driveway itself requires about a hu, over 100 feet of culvert to ensure the flow between, through that swale that has to be filled, and with up to 11 feet of fill. So it's not a inexpensive driveway for them to develop. We have no issue with it. It's been vetted well by Plan Commission.
Great. Alderman Allen, question for?
Question, Mark. It makes mention in the sale document that the sale is based on fair market value, assuming that this does represent fair market value.
It does. In itself, the land is not developed by itself, that portion. We did vet this through the city assessor and adjusted it for the, the costs that are necessary to even make it usable, even as a driveway location. So it is a fair market value.
What's, go ahead, Ian.
So the resolution that's in front of you is the same resolution that we typically do with the sale of land. It's approving the offer to purchase, it's ratified, or it's a, it's authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the deed, and any other documents necessary, and it's authorizing J to, to execute the closing statement, the closing affidavits, the day of closing documents, so that we will just move forward ultimately once the county approves the offer to purchase. We're not gonna come back with the final closing documents. This would be the last action item before closing, which I think would happen end of October or so, so.
One other question?
Second.
All right. Discussion, I do have one more question for Mark. Was there any issues within like, the neighborhood or people that lived around that area? Did anybody have concerns with this becoming a driveway access point?
We've received no issues or questions regarding it. This isn't something that normally would get published, but the comprehensive plan change and the zoning amendment for this was, was published and, and had, subject to two separate public hearings.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. We had a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. And that is all the business before the Finance Committee. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. And with that, I will call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for September 28th, 2020, and notice that we have all Aldermen present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, foundation under God, and individual, the liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. I'll note that we have 18 items on the agenda. I would like to move item number 15, which is an update on Carl Cusfield, up to presentations as well. So if we're comfortable with that, I'm going to start with that item, Carl Cusfield renovation update. We'll start with Mike Gensch, and I know we have some guests in the audience.
Sounds good. Thank you. Tonight, we wanted to provide the common council with an update on a pretty cool, pretty exciting project for Regner Park. The renovation of Carl Cusfield Baseball Diamond has been in discussion for several years. Over the past several years, the city has been working closely with the West Bend Baseball Association on a renovation plan for this facility. This planning includes field layout, designing, timing, and funding. Basically, what we would be looking at is a complete renovation of Carl Cusfield and Regner Park. If all the funding phases would come through, we are talking from concessions to grandstand, to a new field, to fencing, anything and everything related to that field would be new, except for the scoreboard. The scoreboard, the baseball association actually donated to the city several years ago. The plan may be executed in phases depending on funding and timing. Phase one would include a hybrid field, which would include a synthetic turf infield, a natural turf outfield with irrigation, new dugouts, a new 500-person grandstand, fencing, and relocating a water main that currently runs through the existing field. The estimated dollar value or cost related to phase one is about 1.4 million. We're still waiting for one or two final numbers to come in from contractors for grading and seeding the outfield, moving a water main, things like that. But our estimate at this point in time is 1.4 million for phase one. Phase two would include field lights and storage underneath the grandstand. Phase three, phase three would include a new concessions facility with new restrooms. The current concessions building of restrooms, I will say, are adequate, and that is being polite. We could use, we could definitely use an update. And the restrooms don't only support the baseball facility, it also supports general activities in the park, facility rentals, things like that. So again, the existing restrooms are certainly adequate, but an upgrade would certainly be appreciated. With the financial support of many local businesses and individuals, the West Bend Baseball Association is quickly narrowing the financial gap for getting this exciting project started. Representatives of the baseball association are here tonight if you do have any specific questions for them. Again, we wanted to bring this back to the common council. It's been a while since we've been here. We have some new council members, and we didn't want you driving down Main Street in the next couple of weeks or a couple of months and realize that Carl Cusfield is gone. Because in-house, our staff will be doing all the demolition, which will include removing a grandstand, the lights, the fencing, the dugouts, things of that nature. So the city is financially involved. We are also supporting this project with some activities and getting it kick-started. So again, it looks as if we are getting super close, very close to getting this project started. And we wanted to, you know, provide the common council with an update, and we didn't want to have any surprises for anyone. So we also did an update at Park Commission last month. So that's what I have, if we have any questions. Thank you.
Sounds great. Go ahead. Alderman Hugestir.
Mark, I mean, Mike, I wasn't at the last one. Did we lose the money from Carl, or not for Carl, cause the Cal Ripken Foundation, or is that still in?
Sure. The City of West Bend, the Baseball Association, we've been working with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation for several years, and we are still working with Cal Ripken. Basically, it comes down to the city, mainly the baseball association, applied for a grant with Major League Baseball with support of Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. We did not receive that grant. So financially, Cal Ripken Senior is committed to the project. We will not be receiving any grant money from Major League Baseball or any other baseball foundation. So they are still involved, to what degree and what level, we don't are still involved, to what degree and what level, we don't know as of yet, but financially, they are still committed to the project.
Any other questions? Otherwise, any comments or anything from any of our other guests in the back there? Welcome to come on up. I know we might not know you, so you might need to introduce yourself there.
I was holding my breath when I pulled the mask down. Good evening, Council, thanks for having the Baseball Association here tonight, and thanks for the work you guys are doing in some interesting times. I got on the board of the Baseball Association shortly after my term as mayor, and first meeting that I was at was probably six or eight months ago. And you go into the room, meetings are held out at West Bend Elevator, and there's retired baseball players there, there's current coaches, there's umpires, there's a few guys that haven't given up the dream of making the bigs and are part of the association to keep playing baseball, and then there's Prudy there defending the history of West Bend the way that she does. But in the room, it's very obvious that there's a passion for baseball, to the history of these guys, but also a passion for specifically Regner Park, for the memories that many of them have made on the field, in the dugouts, in the stands, et cetera, and they really, really want to have the next generation to have those same type of experiences. Knowing, as Mike mentioned, we've gone through a few fits and starts with the process over the last several years, knowing that it is a pretty narrow group, the baseball players' group is pretty small, understanding that the field itself really isn't used by the city proper that much, I think we had a little bit of a mud run go through there a bit, but knowing that it is really the Baseball Association, the men's leagues, the high school teams that use it, is really what drove the organization, and Craig specifically, along with Prudy, to keep fundraising. To date, raised privately over $1.3 million, and as Prudy, I'm sure, would be happy to tell you, she's got a few more doors to knock on. So, pretty exciting project, it's taken a little longer than anyone expected, but the passion, not only for baseball, but giving back to the park is there. So, thank you very much for your support, and we're hoping to have a new field by late second quarter of 2021. I'll answer any questions that I can, if you have any, otherwise, thanks again for having us.
This can be hard to tell sometimes, but do you have any sense for the positive economic impact that's going to bring on the city?
Craig can probably tell you a little bit, just from your tournament alone, I think they can, if you want, can hear you in the microphone, just from the one tournament alone, not to mention Little League, Father's Day tournaments, and all that sort of thing.
Just so people at home understand, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but that's going to bring a lot of money into the city, too.
Yeah, thanks for having us, and thanks for considering this project again. The City of West Bend, the West Bend Baseball Association hosts several tournaments throughout the years, a couple of them that bring in teams from all over the Midwest, one that brings in teams from all over the state, and then the West Bend Little League runs their Father's Day tournament, which brings in anywhere, each tournament brings anywhere from 24 teams to, I believe the Father's Day tournament brings in anywhere between 75 and 80 teams into the city. They're all using restaurants, renting hotels, and using all the city amenities that you guys have done a great job helping to support with the city. So, one of the big things that we wanted to do when we did this, and one of the reasons that we're going with synthetic fields is we'll be able to bring more people into town, run more tournaments for the youth, do a lot more camps, and get a lot more people invested, not only in baseball, but other sports, that can use the facility, not just from typically the 1st of May to the end of August, but maybe the beginning of March, because that's when high school baseball starts now, through the end of October into November. So, it creates opportunities not only to do more things within that baseball window that we typically think about, but also into times of year that, you know, their kids are looking for opportunities to continue to do things, and we have a facility, or will have a facility, that will be able to be open and bring those people into West Bend.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for anybody? Otherwise, thank you to the association, and volunteers, advocates, philanthropists, everybody who's making this happen. It's great, great stuff. And with that, I'll move on to the previous item number one, which is a presentation by Alex Boudry of the Horton Group on the Health Insurance Plan. Welcome back.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, tonight, I am going to provide an update from where we were about a month ago, a month and a half ago, on where we are sitting at with our marketing efforts of the city's health insurance plan, and what we are projecting going forward. Here we go. So, on the agenda for my presentation, we'll do a quick recap of the reporting, we have another month of data, so we can show how that's showing, we'll talk about the renewal and our marketing results, and then I have a couple of other considerations that came up during the last time I was here, and I wanted to address those and what that might look like should the city pursue those options. So I know this is really small on the screen, this is how we sell vision insurance, so I apologize, that was a joke, not a very good one. So, again, as you go through, this part is the fixed costs, and then we have our variable costs, which is our medical claims, prescription drug claims, and then any reimbursements and prescription drug rebates that we may receive. Your fixed costs on what we pay for UMR, and our stop-loss carrier, and our prescription drug plan, and our consulting fees are all relatively stable, we've paid about $83,000 to $84,000 a month. The variable costs have been a little bit up and down, and with the most recent month of data through August, we, excuse me, we paid about $184,000 in medical claims, $116,000 in prescription drug claims, which is a little bit higher than we've been running, and then, as you can see, this column, this reimburse column, so these are claims over the specific deductible, that's really been kind of impacting the loss ratio. So, in the last four months, we've received reimbursements back from our stop-loss carrier well over $600,000. So, year-to-date, $677,000. We've only paid out $568,000 in stop-loss premiums. So, from a stop-loss carrier perspective, we are not a profitable group for them, they've paid out more than they've taken in from a premium standpoint. Then we take our enrollment counts, so your employees who have single coverage, and your employees who have family coverage, we take a look at that and multiply it by the funding rates, and we get this monthly loss ratio. You'll see, despite the high claims, in August, we had a loss ratio of 46.65%. Again, that's driven by the fact that we've gotten so much back in reimbursements, which we put back into the health plan, which artificially drives that number down. So, a good month from a loss ratio standpoint, again, for every dollar put in, we've only paid out 47 cents, let's call it, but a lot of that's being due to the fact that we're getting a lot of reimbursements due to some high claims. So with that, you know, year-to-date, we're at 101.65%, which if you did it just on a pure dollar-for-dollar basis, the health plan is running about $39,000 to the red. So almost exactly even what we're bringing in versus what we're paying out. Any questions on that? I did go through it pretty quickly, because I went through it in some detail last time. Okay. Here's a snapshot of the large claimants. We have one claimant, year-to-date, so far, with $742,000 worth of claims, and then we have a handful of others, two through five on this report, that have had over $100,000 in claims. So, again, year-to-date, we've had five individuals hit our specific deductible of $90,000, and then we have a couple others that are, you know, working their way up there. So, we have about 10 claimants on our 50% report for a group of your size, that's a little high, and especially given our one claimant well over $700,000 with a very serious medical condition. So, this will have an impact, and if you remember, last time, as I get into the budget, we were concerned about a potential laser for that top claimant. It's a serious ongoing medical condition, we were worried about what that might have, or what impact that might have on our renewal projection. So, I'm going to go through this a little bit slower, I know I went through it last time, but I think it's important to reiterate. We look at the last 12 months of data, so our medical claims from September 1st of 2019 through August 31st of 2020, and we've paid $3,887,000 in claims. We then pull out all of the reimbursements, so over that 12-month period, we've received $1,190,000 in reimbursements from the stop-loss carrier. We pull out our prescription drug rebates of $78,000, so then we get a net paid claim number. So what's our, kind of, after everything's pulled out, what's our total claims? And that's $2,618,000. We then have to add in trend or inflation in our world, medical costs go up about 5% year-over-year, so we add that in, and our new projected claims number is $2,793,000. You'll note that currently, we have no adjustments for lasers, so there's two factors. One, our stop-loss quotes that I'm going to show you in a minute are not final, they wanted to see data through the month of September, so I won't have those final proposals until probably about two weeks from now, so that's one reason. The other reason is, we are looking at changing prescription drug vendors from Express Scripts through RX Benefits to a company called Magellan, Magellan RX. Magellan RX is a unique PBM in the fact that they're independent, and that they can do some creative things around prescription drugs. Our top claimant here at the city, their claims are driven by prescription drug utilization, they take a very expensive medication. Through Magellan RX, we are able to get that person a grant to help both the member pay for that drug without having any financial impact on the city. So we're able to take that $800,000 claim and essentially remove it from the city's experience. So if this is successful, what we're working on doing between now and January 1st, if we are able to get that person a grant and able to get them off of the city's plan, obviously we would not have a laser moving forward or a higher specific deductible for that individual, which we're talking about savings of $5,000, $600,000 at least, just on removing that one claim from the health plan experience. So, right now, we've left that adjustment at zero. Obviously, things can change, we'll continue to update, but we're optimistic at this point. So then we look at our claims, we add in our stop-loss premiums and fixed costs, I'm going to pause for a moment here, and I'll get to this when we look at the marketing, but currently, on the right side, we have all of our assumptions laid out. All of our stop-loss fees and our admin costs, we actually have those renewals. So our stop-loss fee, our stop-loss premiums are projected to go up at 47%. Now that's only a small percentage of what you pay in terms of the whole health plan, but that component is looking at a large increase. Trend in stop-loss is about 15%, you look at the fact, over the last two years, you were not a profitable group for Voya, and if there's this potential ongoing liability for some of our top claimants, they are not able to give us a laser, we have a no-new-laser contract with that specific vendor, so they would like to spread that risk out around the entire group, which is why they are looking for a rather large increase. Now again, if this grant program that I'm talking about for this medication is successful, I would expect that number to come down, and I will show you some competitive proposals that we'll have in a minute, but we wanted to show you what that might look like in the budget. So even with a 47% stop-loss increase, I'm happy to report that our percent of change, when looking at everything, is at 16.21%. That's if we didn't change any vendors. If you remember, last time, I was talking about maybe a 30% increase, so that cut it in about half. If we change to Magellan RX, which is our strong recommendation, I can then take out an additional $400,000, because above and beyond this grant program, they are competitively priced to a point where we believe we can save $400,000 just on our prescription drug costs. That gets the percent of change increase to 4.5%. On top of that 4.5%, if this grant is successful, there's another half a million dollars of savings in there, we could be talking about a 0% increase, and actually maybe even having some extra funds at the end of 2021, if everything works out according to plan. So I just kind of rattled off a lot of numbers, went really kind of quick, I'm going to pause for any questions.
Alderman Delna, go ahead.
The prescription costs for that one employee, is this a tier four that we're talking about, or something that's not covered at all, or what?
It's covered, it's a specialty medication, so yeah, it would be your high-tier, tier-four medication. It's like $100,000 a month, it's really expensive.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Kennedy?
One other question, how, obviously, you talked about the biggest, you know, the largest drug cost that we have in moving over to Magellan, and how we could do that, are there any other negatives for other, I guess, employees, medications, et cetera, that would be rapidly different?
Rapidly different? I'm going to say no. We did a disruption analysis, I believe, and Michelle, keep me honest here, I think it was like 12, 12 members are going to be impacted. The majority of the impacts are going to be difference in tiers. So if I'm taking a medication today, it might be tier two, and it might be tier three on Magellan's formulary, or vice versa, there's going to be kind of winners and losers with it. But in the grand scheme of things, with your employee base and independence, I believe it was like 12 members were impacted, so relatively small amount of impact.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. So that's where we stand from a budget standpoint, we're sitting at about 4.5% today. Again, if everything goes well, hopefully, we can project a no-rate increase for next year, and maybe even have some money left over.
Excuse me, I need a clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt, before you go to that next page. So, are you saying that you're projecting $3.514 million for our expense, or are you not there?
So, what this number shows is your income at your current rate. So that $3.5 million number would be what you're currently collecting from both what the city puts in and what your employees put in, it's a combined number. The number that we were showing, so the estimated claims plus expenses, again, if we made no changes, was $4,083,000, the number just above that. Do you see that? I got it highlighted, oh, maybe I have it on the screen here. So that number right there, that's highlighted in that light blue, that's what we would expect your claims plus your expenses, so all in, your costs to be for next year. When we look at your income from your current rates, using your funding rates times your enrollment, we're only taking in about $3.5 million. So that's why there's that 16% increase number, because we're showing about a $569,000 deficit. With the change to Magellan RX, and then adding in a family prescription drug deductible, so currently, it's a $100 deductible across the board, it would be 100, single, 200, family. Not huge savings there, but it kind of cleans up the plan and gets it in order with industry norms. That'd be another $10,500 in savings, so if you subtract those from there, the move to Magellan RX plus that deductible, that brings the deficit down to $160,000, or a 4.5% increase to the rates we would need to cover that gap. Does that make sense?
I'm just looking at what the bottom line is for our budget.
So it would be, it would be, let me do some quick math on my feet here, so it would be just over $4 million minus $400,000, so $3.6 million roughly, and then you have to take out the employees' contribution, so they pay 12%?
12%.
About 12%. So, minus the 12%, so minus another $380,000-ish, that's really rough math, and probably not fact-checked, but that's about what it would be.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. So, next, we did go out to the market, stop-loss is a piece that is still outstanding. On here, there's a lot of numbers, I'm going to hit the highlights, but in this column, the first column is your current plan with Voya, it's got all your vendors listed, and then your costs kind of right there towards the top middle, and then right next to it is your renewal. Again, they have a no-new-laser contract, so they have to spread that risk out, and their losses out over the entire population, which is why they're calling for that 47% increase. That 47% increase, to put in a little bit of context, is about a $400,000 increase in our fixed premiums. We did blanket the market, we went to over 20 stop-loss carriers, we have two competitive proposals from Symetra and Swiss Re. Symetra- Symetra is coming in at a 1.81% increase, which is obviously much better than 47.5%. It's only an increase of about $14,000. However, it's pending large claim review, so it's not a true apples-to-apples comparison, because if we get a big laser, we're not able to secure that grant, et cetera. That obviously tweaks that proposal greatly. And then we have a proposal from Swiss Re at 21%, and then Anthem at 11%. I'll get to Anthem in a moment. But I wanted to show you that we do have some competitive options. So while we have in the budget that 47% increase today, I expect that number to come down, which will only help our budget numbers going forward. Last, on the marketing standpoint, we not only looked at stop-loss carriers, we looked at different third-party administrators, we looked at different provider networks, and then, of course, we looked at different pharmacy benefit managers in order to find literally the best deal for the city of West Bend and your employees. We already touched on stop-loss. From an administration standpoint, we're with UMR, United Healthcare's parent company. Our admin fees are slightly higher than kind of what the market had to bear. However, we collect a lot of our prescription drug rebates, which kind of factors into that, and we get to continue the best network. So when you look at your third-party administrator, you also have to compare that to who the provider network is for that third-party administrator. And if you look below, the UMR Choice Plus Network is the strongest. It's right up there with Anthem's Blue Preferred, 53% versus 54% in terms of discount from your provider system. You'll see that Amps is on there at 63%. While there is great discounts in that, it's a reference-based pricing model, which is very different. It can potentially put your employees in the middle of some balance billing issues. So while there is a strong financial component to it, we didn't feel like it was the best opportunity for your employees at this time. So when comparing UMR to Anthem, they're right in line there. So, you know, the big savings to Anthem isn't quite there. And then when you look at the PBM side, we already talked about Magellan. You can see from an estimated annual net cost, they're very competitive, 35% below current. And if we went with Anthem on the network and the admin side, that would also include Ingenio RX, their prescription drug vendor, and as you can see, they're $217,000 above current, which wipes out the savings on the admin side. So from a total package, stop-loss is to be determined, but from an administration standpoint, we're recommending staying put with UMR, staying with their Choice Plus Network, and then switching pharmacy benefit managers over to Magellan RX.
Alex, can I just ask, back on page four here? If we lasered some employees, I thought that there was a benefit by doing that, but this is showing that if we did that, we're risking any changeover that we would have. Those new carriers might not take us because we have the lasers. Is that correct?
No. So why the laser is so important? So, you know, these rates will probably hold pretty steady. So Symetra is probably going to come in about 2% above current. The laser is so important, because if they, let's say they give us a laser of $500,000, we now have to add that liability back in. So even though their rates are only going up 2%, and it's only a $14,000 delta, well, now it becomes a $514,000 delta. And now, we have that conversation of what do we expect with that person to happen? Do we take the risk on the laser and hope that those claims never come to fruition? Or do we take the renewal and spread the risk out with a 47% increase? Those are the conversations we'd have to have. So that's why it doesn't make sense to spend a lot of time on this, because so much is yet to be determined.
I got you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any questions on any of the marketing information, the quotes that we just talked about? Okay. Then I wanted to conclude my presentation with a couple of items that came up from comments from the council the last time I was here in person. The first was, you know, have we looked at offering multiple plan designs? What would it look like if we offered additional plans? So we did want to show what that might look like. We came up with two different options. One is a high-deductible health plan, HSA-compatible plan. That's alternate one. And then alternate two is the same type of copay plan we have today, excuse me, just with higher deductibles. So I'll maybe start with alternate two. Alternate two is the exact same plan we have today, except it would increase the deductible from $2,500, single, $5,000 family, to $4,000, single, $8,000 family. And then the out-of-pocket would also increase by $2,000 and $4,000, single-family, respectively. Increasing those deductibles is a savings of about 10.75%. So what that means is those savings numbers, and I want to be careful to explain this, is if we got rid of our plan today and moved everybody over to this new plan, that's that 10.75% savings number. I don't think that's the intent. We would want to have multiple plan options, but that's what that 10.75 number represents, is if we shifted the entire population over. Option one is a high-deductible health plan. It would be eligible for a health savings account. We left the deductibles the same, so it'd be $2,500 and $5,000. Now, this is a non-embedded deductible, and it has to be non-embedded for purposes of IRS law. Essentially, what that means is if you have one individual in your family who has medical conditions, that one person could meet the entire family deductible. So, you know, I go into the doctor, my family of three, and I have $5,000 in medical expenses, I'm going to hit the whole family deductible on my own. Today, on your current plan, you have an embedded deductible, which means my $5,000 would be capped at the individual level of $2,500. So it's a little bit different in how the deductible works. Second, being the fact that it is a high-deductible health plan, all charges would apply to the deductible. So no prescription drug copays, until after the deductible is met, you're going to pay the full cost of your doctor's visits, et cetera. And we have to do that again due to IRS rules. So it's quite a different plan than what you have today. It would take a lot of education to make sure people understand how to use it. But we wanted to show it, because HSAs are becoming more popular, and they have been for a couple of years, and that delta in premium rates would be about 8.5% from your current benefit plan. So what a lot of our employers have done is if they want to offer multiple plans, they set the employer's contribution or the city's contribution at the lowest rate, and then have employees buy up to the richer benefit. We could look at something like that. So I wanted to bring this to your attention with the changes that we're making to the health plan through the Magellan RX program. In my perfect world, and I know it's not my world, but I would like to maybe keep the plans the same for next year, so we can actually measure those savings and make sure the programs are working appropriately. If you add in a different plan at a lower rate, it could throw those numbers off. But again, if it's the council's desire to offer an additional plan, or if Michelle and the HR team want additional options, this is what we think would make sense to look at. Any questions on the plan design side? Okay. My last slide then here is, received a few questions about what the state plan might look like, if the city joined up with a lot of other municipalities and counties in the ETF plan through the state of Wisconsin. We have on the top your current rates and your current provider system. So with UMR Choice Plus, you have access to every provider, pretty much in the state of Wisconsin, Aurora, Ascension, Freiter, Children's, and then all across the state, and quite frankly, all across the nation. United Healthcare is the second-largest insurer in the country, so they have a very broad-based network. If you looked at the state plan, and these rates, I believe, are from 2019. I did double-check before tonight's meeting, the 2020 rates through WEA Trust East, which would be one of the networks available to you, one of the carriers through the state plan, and they did go up maybe by a couple dollars singles, like $821. The family remained relatively stable, so very close to these rates. And the health systems there in the greater Milwaukee area, Washington County area, Aurora and Ascension are the two big ones, but no Freiter in there, and Children's is obviously still a part of this network. So the Freiter piece might be an issue, but really, when you look at it from a rating standpoint, the rates are quite a bit higher when you look at moving to the state plan. And then also, the first year you move to the state plan, they have the ability, or at least they did, to be honest, they don't work with brokers, but they used to have it, and I believe they still do, where they could increase your premiums by up to 30% given your health of your population.
That's not true.
That's not true. They used to be able to do that. So if they're no longer doing it, then, but these are the rates that were available to me. So again, they don't work with brokers. I'm not real familiar with the state plan, so.
Alden Donak, do you have a question?
Oh, I have lots of questions.
Okay.
First of all, I don't know, where did you get this information from, sir?
ETF's website.
You left out network health.
Yep. The rates were very comparable.
Yeah, but you just told the council that our choice with ETF is WEA Trust, which doesn't cover Freiter. That's not true. Network Health covers Freiter.
But then not Aurora.
You have to pick one or the other, but you didn't say that. I'm not really, you know, it's unfair for you. I am quite upset at how this has been handled by the city of West Bend, because at the August meeting, I asked, why aren't we looking at, why are we self-insured? Why aren't we in the Wisconsin system? The answer was, well, this is basically, the basic answer was, this is the way it's always been done. And I said, all right, I'll put numbers together, because I used to do that when I worked in my previous occupation, and I put the numbers together, and I gave those to the city administrator. And I expected that city staff would be directed to do a head-to-head comparison between self-insured and joining the Wisconsin group. And instead, this was given to Horton. That is a conflict of interest. Horton is the current vendor. You don't ask the current vendor to do a comparison with a competitor. That's insane. And the information is incomplete here. We don't know the cost of the premium for 2021. We do not know a head-to-head comparison of the benefits. The state plan is more expensive, but the deductibles are thousands of dollars less. And you don't get into stop-loss, and you don't get into any of this. You pay the premium, and that's taken care of by the insurance companies, and they have their own PBM. Now, I hasten to add, maybe in a head-to-head competition, including the comparative benefits and the deductibles and the premiums, the self-insured would be less expensive for the city and maybe a better deal for the employees. I don't know. But we don't have that information. And we cannot vote on this at budget time with having that information, and doggone it, I shouldn't have to hold somebody's hand to get this information. I shouldn't have had to put this together for the city. But I did. And apparently, for two months, no one's done anything with it. So I'm not mad at you. You did a great job. This is impossibly complex work, but you should have been asked to do this. Okay? This was not your job.
So I don't know if Michelle wants to clarify, but I know that HR did look at those options. Do you want to share what you did?
I don't have it here with me.
Okay.
But yeah, we did review what you had, yes. And we've looked at other things as well, or at other, we reviewed it. And generally, yes, self-funding is cheaper than going with the state plan. What I would say is, it's not direct competition. He's a broker. He's not the TPA or the health insurance. So I would guess I would disagree with that, that it's not in direct competition. But I guess I would like to have that. We can definitely, we reviewed it, but we can definitely look into a deeper dive. But I do know, I've heard that there is an up charge. So I guess I would have to, we'll come back again and talk to you about it, but, or if you would like to take it offline, we could talk about it then, too. But I did look at your stuff and talked to the administrator and talked to our broker, who is in the industry, to review all this stuff. So we didn't just do nothing with it, I guess, is what I would say. Sorry.
Is there a head-to-head?
I'm sorry.
Did you do a head-to-head comparison on the benefits and the premiums between self-insured and the state?
No, I did not do a head-to-head, and I don't know if you can do a head-to-head, apples-to-apples, but no, I did not do that.
Okay.
Are there any questions on this piece?
Is anyone on our council covered by the insurance? No. Okay, that's.
Yes, there is.
No, there is?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a couple.
I forgot.
There's a few.
Okay. Thank you.
We have passed employees. Any other questions? So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So what are we doing with what Jed's asking for?
I was going to ask what next steps were as well.
I have to go back and review. It's really, I mean, technically, it's, everything's in play right now. We're, it's renewal time. We're looking at everything. We're trying to manage costs. We're trying to look at, you know, a lot of factors. So everything's kind of like puzzle pieces and putting it together. So yes, going back to review it and see what next steps are. I need to talk to, you know, team and everything, and then get that information, so.
Okay.
Excuse me. If the council wanted to see a quote from ETF and the state plan, again, last I've checked, again, they don't work with our company, they don't work with brokers like us. I believe it's a $2,500 fee to receive a quote, and that usually comes out, I believe, the middle of October, when they're doing their rates for their entire population. So we can assist to the best of our abilities to make sure the state plan has what they need and what HR has. In terms of that, we'd be happy to assist in any way we can, so.
Alden Donak?
I don't know that, I mean, the rates are right here.
So they've come out for 2021?
Yeah. I took it off the website today.
Okay.
Everyone's doing their budgets, so they had to get the rates out. And if you go on their website, I mean, I don't know if you need a quote, because it's a master contract, and no matter what the company is, everybody has the same benefits. There may be some minor differences, but, I mean, the PBM is the same for everybody and so on and so forth, so.
The rates are different for state employees versus local employer. They're not the same.
This is the local employer.
That's what I'm saying, that there's just two different rates, and there's two different, and depending on which area you live in, yes, there is different systems. So it's definitely something to discuss.
So I do agree that the, I mean, the pressure is on, because our budget is now, so we really do need to come to a solution, I guess, on this. At least, how do I say, put a Band-Aid on it, but, you know, like you were saying, we got to cover our butts, at least for next year. So I hope that we continue to push the envelope.
We'd be happy to show it. If the rates are already out, I apologize for not seeing 2021 rates, we'd be happy to map out those plan designs, similar to this type of sheet, where you can see the different plan designs versus the rates at the top, and that'll show a comparison of, it may not be perfect, given that deductibles and copays may be different, but at least you can get a sense for, here's what the state plan looks like from a plan design standpoint and a rating standpoint versus what the city has to offer. Would that be?
Would you also be able to include the option of the Magellan prescription change as well?
With the new rates?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that sounds like a huge savings to the city.
As soon as I have stop-loss proposals, then yes. The best I'm going to be able to do in the next week or two is probably going to be our current plan with our current rates. I can show the 4.5% increase, which.
Okay, I was going to say, or like a projected, or, you know, something, because I think that that $400,000 potential savings from just that prescription change is huge. I don't know what WEA would offer, you know, but.
So on the state plan, it's more of a fully insured program, so you're kind of buying the entire product. So your prescription drugs, your medical plan, it's all going to be under the WEA or Network Health umbrella. So it's, from a city standpoint, it would be, you'd just be paying premium to the state plan, and then your employees get their benefits. There'd be a lot less vendor management and different component management. Does that make sense?
I think so. I work at an independent employer, so I'm not as familiar with state and local government healthcare, unfortunately. Thank you.
Yep. Alden Donak?
I'm sorry, but what I'm confused about is that if we go to the state, you lose us as a client, right?
Not necessarily.
Potentially, yes. I mean, I'm on a consulting agreement, but, I mean, I wouldn't pay me if you went.
Correct.
If that's, that's fair.
That's conflict of interest.
Potentially, yes. We have other things placed through him as well, so yes, it would change the level of what we use them for, yes.
Any other questions for either of these two? All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Alex.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Yeah, you're very welcome.
All right. And believe it or not, we're on item number two, approval of the minutes, regular minutes for September 14th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any corrections or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And then I'll look for a motion to consent the agenda. We're going to pull out items number six and eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Alderman Hugestir, can you take number six?
Number six, appointment of agent Robert Goodell, QuickTrip Incorporated, QuickTrip 136, 1750 South Silverbrook Drive.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. And then number eight, a resolution to accept donation to the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department with Alderman Kennedy abstaining.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussions or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And we'll move on to agenda items for consideration. Number 10, approve 2021 city shared ride taxi operation. If we have any other questions, Doug is still here, otherwise I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And item number 11, city of West Bend taxi request for proposal and agreements through 2021 through 2025. Look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Doug? Uh, yep, Alderman Hugestir.
Not for Doug, but I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And item number 12, approval of taxi service, PTASP, Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan.
Motion to.
Second.
It's been motion second. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Wonderful. Thanks, Doug. It was hard for you. Number 13, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $3.94 million taxable general obligation refunding bond, series 2020C.
Mayor Jenkins, if they could approve this resolution, that amount has changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because they took down the premium by the, and I'm not sure, it's in your.
It was a 3775?
Right, that's correct. So just make that motion, that, for that amount, what the premium reduced it by.
Got it.
So we can change that tomorrow in the minutes.
And do we have that motion?
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve with the 307,075.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And number 14, resolution approving the sale of city property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. And then we already did 15, so 16, ordinance allowing dogs in city parks. This is back again, because we did not have a unanimous vote last time. Anything else? Mike?
Nope. The ordinance, sorry, the proposed ordinance that is in front of you is the same ordinance that was in front of you at the September 14th meeting.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Steph?
Alderman Butchlick?
No.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
No.
Alderman Kaler?
No.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Hugestir?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Five to three.
Five, three.
Yep, thank you. All right. And we'll move on to reports. Item number 17, a report by Alderman Burquist regarding the library board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last library board meeting was held on September 15th. We were briefed by the library director on current operations of the library. She's happy to report circulations are up, the volunteers are back helping the, with library duties. We were also briefed on a new software program specific to libraries named InVisionware. Discussion centered on fees, fines, and costs of the software resulting from net briefing. We were also advised that the library is selling logo bags from the circulation desk at a cost of $7. The board president's report included information on the library's, library director's evaluation, which actually turned out to be a mute issue because of her resignation effective October 19th. We had further discussion on the memorandum of understanding with the Park and Rec Department concerning the library rec center. Old business included a Monarch Library System update, a rec center update, and more 2021 budget considerations. The next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 20th.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Burquist? Yes, sir.
Are there, are there any plans for coming up with a replaced library director or a new one?
The last I heard is that they're opening it up to internal search. They're giving the opportunity to current employees to, who would like to. We have a date scheduled for reviewing of resumes, and if that doesn't come up with a candidate, then going outside the library system.
Who's taking over the duties on the 19th if you don't have somebody?
I would assume that the assistant director would be doing that, but that's just an assumption on my part. That's his.
I believe that's correct. Yep. Any other questions? Then I'll move on to item number 18, a report by Alderman Hugestir Kennedy regarding the Park and Rec Commission.
Yeah, we met on September 17th for Parks and Rec. Obviously, we spoke a lot about the Carl Cuss Field update and renovations, which Mike gave us an update on tonight. We also discussed the moving forward with the All Abilities Playground is going to be sent out to the approved project manager that we, we've already voted on. And I know that Mike and team are also, their goal for the summer, or for the fall, is going to be 186 stumps being ground within the city. And also, they're working on the street tree list being updated, and they have some planting locations. People can go check out some options for their trees if they want to request the new ones with, with the Emerald Ash Borer trees being removed.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Kennedy? Otherwise, I'll open it up if there's any other announcements for the go-to-the-order. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we address whether or not to make some kind of a statement relative to trick-or-treating at the next council meeting.
So I actually already had that as part of my announcements, and I'll cover that in just a second. Did you have a announcement as well?
Me?
Okay, sorry. Was there any other hands up? On trick-or-treating and following the guidelines set forth by the county health department, the city of West Bend is planning on celebrating trick-or-treating on October 31st between 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We only ask that residents be respectful to their fellow neighbors, and please use an on or off porch light to signal whether you will be participating.
Can I ask where, where the county health department thought to put that guidance?